All right, so it is 6:33 PM on Tuesday, September 8th, and I am calling the Board of Selectmen meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. Notes are being taken by Gail Hunter. And I think what we may do is mute one or two people to make sure we're not getting feedback. All right, so let's see, this is our first meeting using Zoom as the platform. I hope it works out better than our previous software packages. So the first item on the agenda is actually a public hearing that was posted a while ago for an entertainment license. However, the applicant has withdrawn that license application, so we will be passing that hearing. So good idea for people when they sign in to mute themselves. We'll be changing the settings on the next meeting so that when people come in, they're automatically muted. Okay, the second item on the agenda are committee interviews, one for Lee Shar for the Sustainability Committee. But Lee has a conflict tonight. She, so she won't be able to make it. We seem to be having bad luck interviewing her, but with some sustained effort, we will get around to it. So we'll be trying to bring her back in for the next meeting.
Bad punt.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, and we're also interviewing an oldie but a goodie. Mr. Tom Cahill. Ke- 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 Ho, is that, did I get that right, Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes, you did.
Okay, all right. So for the Seaside One Committee, Mr. Keo, if you would introduce yourself to everybody in the world and tell us a little bit about yourself and we'll get down.
My name's Tom Keo. I'm interested in serving on the Seaside One Committee. My history with Seaside One goes back to the point when the PBD Essex Museum was not taking very good care of our two pieces of apparatus in the 1970s, and the fire department went up and got them back. Then we just had to find a, find a place to store them for a few years. And what, once the new, once the museum was opened up, we moved those right in. I was also involved in the committee that put the cupola on top of Seaside One and have a long history, shall we say, of going back with the fire apparatus and the equipment. And would like to be able to put my knowledge and my skills to work with the other people on the committee. Just as a side note, my, my grandfather went to the Great Salem Fire in 1914 with the steamer.
Oh, wow.
Not me, that's my grandfather.
Also, Tom Keo?
What back?
Was his name also Tom?
His name was James.
Well, there we go.
Okay. So do we have any other questions or comments from board members for this fine applicant?
Well, I would object to this, this applicant on the grounds that he's overqualified for the position. But I think that, I think that he'll do a good job and and if he doesn't, we can always reconsider.
And I think the Seaside One Committee will take a, probably a larger role than in the past, especially as the historical museum moves out of responsibility for various activities in maintaining that building as well. So a little more pressure on Tom, not that he's not used to it.
I already asked my one question.
Well.
You asked him whether he had time to serve?
We don't need to worry about this one.
Yeah. Apparently. Okay, well, we could kick this, this particular softball around all night long. So can I get a motion to approve Tom Keo to the Seaside One Committee for a three-year term?
So moved. Second.
Oh, there's Ann. All right, any discussion? All in favor, roll call vote. Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Bob McTurner?
Yes.
Mr. Round?
Yes.
Mr. Bowling votes yes. And we're stuck with Tom for another three years on something anyway. Well, we could fire him, I suppose. Nah, yeah, we'll leave him there.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Keo, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Always a pleasure.
Yep.
Thank you, Tom.
Unfortunately, I have other things to do this evening. I would love to stay and listen to your meeting, but have a good meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay.
All right. Next item on the agenda is speed limits discussion. So Greg, do you want to tee this up?
Greg is muted.
He is muted.
Sorry, I did that. So I'm happy to do so, or Jeff can also start us off. Jeff did a nice spreadsheet for us, just listing the different categories of changes that are on tap. And we met with the some staff and police department and reviewed the list, and we were able to just do a little bit of fine tuning, but we had most of it down right, and he's amended it a bit. So it outlines the three different areas. So we have the creation of multiple but smaller safety zones. So recall that currently we have a large sort of global safety zone encompassing most of the village area, mile radius from the train station. And that is a little, little too broad for the state's liking. They like to be a little more specific and more detailed. And so we have broken out a number of proposed safety zones instead of the one large one. And, and then you move on to areas where the speed limit would revert to the 25 mile an hour general stipulation, which is the townwide speed limit. Taking out a few roads, the three roads out of the 20 and converting it, changing it back to the 25. And then there are a couple of proposed study zones. We, we already have the 15 mile an hour zone that's on the books in, in the village on Bridge from, from, I'm sorry, on Beach, from top, top of the hill from Union down to Tappan. So that would remain. There has been discussion about expanding the 15 mile an hour zone to include Bridge Street, Central and parts of Bridge. Still, some, some discussion and debate on that as to whether or not it's wise to go forward. We, at a minimum, we probably should do, and we've already started, some monitoring of speeds. What we don't want to have happen is petition the state for a slower speed and then find out that the engineering study would recommend a higher speed because you're required to take the 85th percentile speed as your, as your speed limit. So we want to proceed slowly on that if we are to go forward. Jeff, want to add some other comments?
Yes, a couple of comments on the sheet that was included in the packet, which is an older version. There's a mistake on the Pine Street entry. The zone actually begins at Bridge Street and goes for one half mile from there to, basically to Woodholm, not to Parsons Lane. Currently, it's marked 20 all the way out to Parsons Lane. But in discussions with Todd, that was a mistake, and it should only be going out as far as Woodholm and then turn 25 in the area around Woodholm. The second thing is that you were commenting on the 15 mile an hour zone in the village. And in the notes and comments, it says that there are no 15 mile an hour signs left in the village. All that we have in the village are 20 mile an hour signs. So that 15 mile an hour zone, which is what the state has allowed us to have after an engineering study, has disappeared into 20 mile an hour signs and is not marked at all as 15 miles an hour. And I don't know, Greg, whether you saw Todd's report of the study?
I have not looked at it yet. I did, I noted that he did send it out this afternoon. I just haven't had a chance to look at it.
Yeah, I, he did a study on both Central and Union and and came up with, I'm trying to see if I can grab it here. Came up with there it is. Came up with speeds on Union Street. This would be from Pine to, excuse me, from, from, on Union Street, going down towards Tappan. And in that area on Union Street that they took it, they had an average speed of 18.32 miles an hour. So that's below the 20 that it's currently marked and above the 15, but it's within, within the ballpark of most of the speed, speed zone studies that I've seen, the traffic studies that I've seen for people running over the speed limit. The speed limit in the area is marked as 20. So it's actually running a little bit under. The Central Street study that was done, was done further up past Seaside One. Not, not past Seaside One, excuse me. Central Street study was done, and that study indicated that people are going 23 miles an hour, which is slightly over the mark 20. So as people come into town, it seems like they slow down. And particularly on Union Street. But on Central Street, they're going a little bit faster. So that's the information we have on that at this point. Whether we want to try and reinstitute or extend the 15 mile an hour zone, I don't know whether Todd's on this call or not. Whether he has any comments on that in terms of extending it.
So the original proposal was to extend it, the 15 mile an hour zone, all the way out past Seaside One to where that study is being done, right? Is that correct?
The original proposal was to have it start being 15 at Ashland.
Right. So the current speed study doesn't seem to support that.
Well, at 15 miles an hour, the, the average speed right now is is 23. So people are running a little bit faster than that. There is the flashing lighted sign that's just as you come to the top of the hill on Bridge Street.
For Ashland, right?
Yeah, right at Ashland. And that's, that's marked as a 20. And so people are slowing down as they come to that, but not all the way to 20.
Yeah.
Is that average, Jeff? The speeds averaged out? So you have some people going good deal faster and some going more slowly?
It is, it is an average speed. It's not a median speed. We've been down that route before. There were 47,800 vehicles that passed through between September 1st and September 8th. And westbound, the speed was 2350, and eastbound, the speed was 2293, negligible amount in between the two. Similarly, in the other study that was done on Central, the westbound and eastbound were within one mile an hour of each other. And it is an average speed, 18.
Can you, can you tell me, Jeff, if, how, how specifically was the study done? Was it done over several days and for a broad time range? Or, I mean, and I'm only asking because my personal experience has been that traffic coming towards downtown on Bridge Street is I frequently see that sign saying in excess of 30 miles an hour. So I'm just curious how the study was done.
Well, the study was done from the September 1st to September 8th, till today. And that's why these results weren't out in your packet. They just came in this afternoon around 4:45 from Todd in an email to Greg and me.
And how were they, was it, was it done with the tubes that?
It was done with the tubes. One, the, the Central, the Union Street side had 50, almost 54,000 vehicles. The Central Street side had 47,800, almost 48,000 vehicles. I'm not sure where the vehicles went, whether they all turned onto School Street or not. But this, this, because there's quite a difference between the two numbers. But those, that's a, that's an incredibly large number of vehicles. So that average, Becky, I understand your concern is what's the range? And, and are people going a lot faster than that to cause that to be the average?
Right.
My, my assumption would be when you had that number of vehicles that that it's pretty close to.
Yeah, so the thing is, the tubes are down by a little bit past Seaside One, and that flashing sign is well, well up on the bridge. And there's a big, long run in that's a straight line. We're going pretty fast. They see the sign, they start to slow down. And then by the time they get to Seaside One, or the, the intersection of Pine and Central, they've started to really slow down a lot more.
The other thing is that the speed limit posted at the bottom of that hill is 30. So, and they, the sign starts picking people up at the top of the, of the hill going down toward a 30 mile an hour sign.
So where are you talking about, Ann?
On Bridge Street, heading from West Manchester into town. There is, oh God, I've forgotten the name of which thing that comes into the harbor. But at the bridge on Bridge Street, there's a 30 mile an hour sign. So you hit the bottom.
Right where Bennett comes out, right where, the other end of Bennett comes out onto.
Yeah. And, and it might, the first 20 mile an hour sign is approximately adjacent to the speed limit, speed sign.
The first 20 mile an hour sign is the, is the lighted sign.
Yeah, exactly.
And then the next 20 mile an hour sign is just after Pine Street.
Right. So maybe it would make sense not to worry too much about people approaching the, the flashing sign because they're coming from a 30 mile an hour zone, and the sign is picking up people who are just approaching a 30 mile an hour sign. Or maybe it needs to be sorted out some other way.
Well, at the risk of, of causing a major uproar in the town about parking, there are two parking spaces that people park in that are right next to that lighted sign. And, and when I've come through, it, it tends to, when cars are parked there, it tends to block the sign. Whether we need to hoist the sign up higher or remove, remove those parking spaces? I didn't say that out loud.
But we could maybe move the sign 50 or 60 feet into town, which, where there are no parking spaces.
Or perhaps farther out towards West Manchester. I mean, my concern, people are.
You can't go further out because then it's the state highway. And we can't, we can't change that highway.
All right, were the tubes placed anywhere other than down near Seaside One? Was that the only place?
It was actually up from Seaside One.
Up from there, yes. It was, it was up above.
Close to Pine Street.
Yeah.
Okay, it's, it's, and again, personal observation, just that the cars are zipping up to that sign. And just, you know, just based on what I have seen this, the, the, the lighted sign saying. I mean, my concern being if we're going to do a study, we should have a study that's going to, to genuinely reflect the patterns and speeds we have at various points along the road.
Well. So the, the engineering studio, the methodology for that presumably would be prescribed by the state, right?
Yeah.
If the state doesn't have control over that portion of the highway.
Yeah, but if we want to, I think, so let me roll back to what we, I think the, the objective is in this particular whole section. It is, for this part, it is to see whether or not we want to pursue a 15 mile an hour zone. Is that correct?
Correct.
So part of the reason for doing this initial study is to see whether or not, if we did that, we would shoot ourselves in the foot because the state would find that we actually were running speeds higher than we were currently posting, like over 25 miles an hour.
Eli, I wish, I wish Todd were on the call, but I'm pretty sure that the state does not have control over the portion of 127 from the lighted sign to School Street.
I, I agree. However, if we wish to set a speed limit in 15 miles an hour, we're still required to go to the state and give them an engineering study, which shows that it is supported. We can't just by fiat set it to 15 miles an hour. And if the state finds that the engineering show, study shows that the average speed is higher than what we, but than the 85th percentile of what we want as a speed limit, they won't allow it. Is that correct, Greg?
That's, that's correct. And they could actually require you to set it at the 85th percentile speed.
85th percentile of the current speed that we picked up on Central Street is 19, 19 and a half miles an hour.
So it's at about 20, which is where we're at right now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. The 85th percentile is 1955.
Okay.
It's based on the study that Todd just completed.
Yep.
Okay, so, so we wouldn't lose that much than, yeah, the state for this, this request.
Can you remind me exactly where the, where the town road on Bridge Streets starts? And yeah, exactly, where does the town road start?
It starts at Ashland.
It does start at Ashland. Okay, thank you.
And that Ashland corner is a slowing factor right off the bat because that's a fairly, that's quite a bend.
It, it should be, but I, I, I'm not, I'm not convinced. Eli, is my, is my, am I lagging again?
A little bit, but not too bad. Not, not, not as bad as normal. It's, it's workable. So so is the, the, let's, let's talk about what the objective is here tonight with respect to the little area that we're talking about right now. That's the, the, the section that's called the special study zone. And the suggestion, the, the objective was to see whether or not we could get a 15 mile an hour zone running from essentially the intersection of, originally, I thought it was from the intersection of Pine and Central all the way over to Union and then down to Tappan Street. Is that still the objective or has, has that changed?
We have an existing 15 mile an hour zone from School Street to Tappan Street.
Right, but it was Todd's proposal to try to extend that, was my understanding.
Well, we talked some about bringing 15 miles an hour out to this area that we're talking about from Ashland to school. But you know, I, I think that, that we're going to have a really hard time justifying that with, with the state in terms of going down to 15. And, and you know, it's, it's hard to get people to go 15 miles an hour when the speed limit is set at 20. But more importantly, what we've discussed in terms of the issues related to speed zones and a state study were out, going out by the school on Summer Street and out towards Sweeney. And if you look at the very bottom of this chart in the comment section, it starts at Forest Street at 35 and doesn't drop to 20 until just after Sweeney. Kind of just, just before you get to Bailey's or Gas by the Sea or whatever its current name is. Outbound, there were no signs from Beach to Washington Street at all. And then a 25 mile an hour sign just after you come around the curve on Washington Street. And then it goes up to 35 miles an hour just before you get to Sweeney. And the concern was that we have the school zone and we have kids in the park at Sweeney, and we can't drop that area because that's all state-controlled on 127. But if we could get the state to at least, you know, move the 35 mile an hour zone out beyond Sweeney and start the 20 mile an hour zone on the, on the inbound side before Sweeney, that would be good. And whether they'll drop it to 20s because it's a safety zone for the school and the park, that's, that's really the question. That would be much more of a concern in terms of a state study than trying to get the Bridge Street area from Ashland to School Street down to 15.
Right, so what's the, what is the suggestion for the Summer Street, School Street zone?
For, for the area I was just discussing?
Yes.
Well, we'd like, we'd like to have it marked coming out of the town until you get to Washington Street. I mean, it's tough because you, you, you want to have a zone that's at least a quarter of a mile long. I think that's actually state law. So if you go up to 25 at Washington Street, you run right into the school zone immediately. you run right into the school zone immediately. So most ideal would be to have it be twenty from Beach Street to Sweeney Park. In both directions.
So is the proposal to petition the state towards that end? Or is this just that we need to do some more study in, in order to make a plan?
Jeff, do we, do we have any data?
I wish Todd were on this call.
Yeah, do, do we have any data on Summer Street in that area?
On the call, but we can also put the tubes out there to, to collect some new data.
I think, I think that collecting data, data for the area that I'm talking about. So around the Cricket and, and then further out beyond Lincoln Street. Beyond the gas station, right where they have the, the signs changing now. To see, to see what kind of speeds we're seeing there now. That might be useful for us to do. If we could.
Okay. So, so part of the plan for this
If he brings the A-game, we're in good shape for Dennis to play Sasha in the series. Let's hope they don't play another, look like a junior's match, those guys. George and Zanara, they were so tight. Understandably, I guess, his opportunity is open there, but boy, that was a little six-one, four-two, forty-five choices.
Yep, all right.
Just jumped on, he said.
I was just, I was just texting him.
Todd's in?
Yep, he just jumped on.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm here. Can you hear me? Yeah.
Okay, Todd, we've been talking about the study that you just finished. Thank you for getting that data to us. And and what the goal is for that area. Do we want to petition the state to go down to fifteen in that area, which we have to do even though we have control over the road because it's dropping down below safety zone standards.
Well, I think on Central Street, if I remember correctly, it was twenty-three miles an hour or so, the average speed?
Yes.
So we're, we're kind of in that ballpark all, all, already, and I'm not sure if they'll be willing to drop it to fifteen.
Yeah. So, so that, that, you know, even if we go to eighty-fifth percentile of what we have, that's nineteen, nineteen point five-five miles an hour, which is right where we are in terms of how it's
They said that, you see that dog? I guess they
Okay. We were also talking about the other area that, that we had discussed with Greg of out by the school zone and, and Sweeney.
Todd, you still there? Or did we get him muted? Hang on. Todd?
I'm not seeing his phone on there right now. No, I don't see his phone on there. He must have dropped off.
Can you hear me now?
Yep. I got you.
Okay.
There we are.
Yep, so, so we wanted on Summer Street from basically Forest on both directions inbound twenty miles an hour because of the school and Sweeney Park. But I think that the state road ends at the sixteen sixty-one, or the town road ends at the sixteen sixty-one cemetery, and we would have to petition the state for that.
And Todd, we don't have any current data on speeds there?
No, I don't have anything recent up there, but we can definitely put the tubes back out there. And the other area where we were gonna put it back is on Bridge Street between Central and Pine and, and Ashland. Just got to find a good spot for that so no one parks on it because that would screw the numbers up a little bit.
Todd, is there parking just town side of Ashland? Right at that curb there by the Crosby's?
Yeah. That's resident parking only on the, on the corner, all the way down, down to the center of town.
Wow, okay.
Yep, so that is a legal parking spot on, on that corner. Something that we had discussed in the parking working group a couple of years ago to eliminate the parking on that corner, but it was never brought forward.
Yeah.
Okay, so trying to get to some conclusions here tonight. So it sounds like, and in this, the section of this document, the special study zone, sounds like we have a little bit more data that we want to, or need to collect before we can really articulate some concrete steps that we want to take. Is that fair to say?
I would say yes, yeah.
I, I think we need to do the school zone area on, on Summer Street. And going out towards Sweeney, if we can get, get two different marks there. But currently that's all marked twenty-five, thirty-five, so we're not going to see little numbers there.
Yeah.
I, I have a question regarding Pine Street. I don't know if it's the same situation on school, but I know that traffic routinely is going around forty miles an hour on Pine Street right now. Is there any, Todd, is there ticketing being done right now out there? Pine Street.
Where on Pine?
Lower part?
Well, it's, it's from Crooked Lane to town. It's twenty miles an hour.
Lower part, yeah.
Including from Crooked Lane. So, yeah, and I mean, I, I drive it to and from work and several times and it's, I end up causing quite a pileup behind me when I'm doing the twenty, twenty-two miles an hour. And I'm, it's, have we done speed limit checks on there recently?
The proposal that, that we've discussed, Becky, is that that would go to twenty-five starting out at one twenty-eight and all the way into the area of Woodhull.
Right, I know that. Todd, Todd dropped off. He's calling in again. But my concern is that, okay, so we raise it to twenty-five. What are people going to be driving then? I, I mean, why, why post a speed if?
Well, it was a mistake. Because the original plan was that it would be a half a mile from Pine Street out.
Jeff, I, I understand that. I, I, and I know, I'm just saying that if we're going to post speeds, then then what, you know, why post a speed if it's not going to be enforced?
Well, so these are, these are two separate issues. The issues that we're trying to deal with, you know, in, in this past, with these steps that we're taking right now are to address the, the mistakes, the missteps that we made when we
Okay.
Twenty miles an hour. So let's take the issue of enforcement and the policy of enforcement and, and not try to tackle that tonight.
Okay, fair enough.
So the things that we can conclude tonight are the two sections of the document said special regulation, safety zones and the revert to twenty-five mile an hour. The special study zone is going to require us to get a little bit more data. And then the remaining question would be around the mitigation effort for Mill and Forest, but let's, let's, let's start with the special regulation, safety zones and the revert to twenty-five miles an hour. So the objective here is for us to say that we are ready to go with starting some publicizing of these proposed changes to rectify the little mis, missteps that we made in advance of a public hearing on those to actually put them in place. So if we could take those first two items and then move on to trying to wrap up on the Mill Street question. So we can move along tonight, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, the very important thing is to change the text that's in front of you which is in an update of the spreadsheet. This is an older version, as I said, on Pine Street that should read Woodhull, not Parsons Lane.
Got it. So other than that, are board members comfortable with us starting to publicize those first two sections as changes that would become the subject of a public hearing in October?
Eli, Todd says he can't get in. He can't get back in.
Well. That's strange. I do not know what to say there. Todd trying to get back in?
Yep.
He is not in a waiting room. I disabled the waiting room. All right, let's proceed and, and see if he can get back in and maybe Tiffany can help him.
To answer your question, Eli, yes, I agree with that, what you said about his zone so far.
And
Todd's back in.
Okay, hey, Todd.
Yeah, I'm back.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yep. Yes.
Yeah, okay. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Okay, so what we were talking about was going ahead and, and approving the public, publicizing of the special regulation, safety zones and the revert to twenty-five mile an hour section with the modification that on the Pine Street side, line item in the special regulation, safety zones in the spreadsheet that we have, it says Parsons Lane where it should say Woodhull.
I've moved that we adopt that as a follow-up, as our position.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of Mr. Round?
Yes.
Mr. Jakes?
I'd modify that to Mrs., but you know, yes.
You know, I, I, I realized a few seconds after I said it.
Just add an S and we're good to go. Yes.
Now I'll get this one right, Mr. Bodmer Turner. That's what I was trying to say.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
And Mr. Bowling votes yes. Thank you.
Can I, I'd like to ask one question of Greg or probably anybody. Are we limited to saying the signs have to be either ten multiples, multiples, the signs have to be multiples of five?
I don't know if I've ever seen a sign other than that.
I have.
Anywhere.
Yeah, I have too, and it catches your eye.
Yes.
And are we allowed to paint speed limits on the road?
Yeah. Well, I don't know if it's part of the manual, the, there's a Bible for, for road signage and whatnot. I don't know if that is in there, but I can certainly find out.
I'm just curious. It's kind of nice reminder.
I, I've certainly seen it on roads.
All right, so we'll, we'll get those information, to get that information and get back to you.
Thank you.
Can I ask about the planning subgroups, discussions around mitigation for Mill and Forest? Is that still underway?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll come back to that.
That would be good.
Yep. All right, anything else that we're going to cover on this? I want to move on.
Yeah, question, Eli. Can we, can we do anything to get a ball rolling on a study out in that Summer Street area that Jeff had mentioned and we had discussed?
I think that's the next step. I think that's what they're gonna do is they're gonna go off and get data.
Okay, because so, so that's in the, that, that can be in the works in the next
We could have that, but probably by the next meeting.
Fine, good.
All right, Todd?
Yeah, I'm back in.
Do you think we could have the data on, on Summer Street by the next meeting? The twenty-first?
Todd got kicked off again.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure the answer, I'm sure he said yes to that.
He's here, he's here.
Yeah, yeah, the answer is yes to that. We can get that out and data back by the twenty-first, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Okay. If board members are okay, I'm going to move on to agenda item number four. Here we go. Outdoor dining, enclosed tents and heaters. Requesting CALAS. But in general, the topic, enclosed tents and heaters. So as we go into colder weather, we anticipate we're going to have potentially more of these, but we have requested some CALAS to, to some extent, enclose the tent in front of CALAS and install some source of heat to take them through some of the colder patches that we're about to get into. They did some research. We did some research. There was a document put out by the state saying that you could enclose up to two sides for tents used for schools. And anything more than that would represent an enclosed space. So the proposal is to put up to two transparent walls on the tent at CALAS, one on the long side, parallel to the street, and one on the downhill side where the wind blows in. There were some discussions between the fire chief and CALAS and the town regarding heaters, which ones would be appropriate. We have not, I don't think there's final resolution on which type of heater can be used, which particular brand and model can be used. We were hoping that we were getting that detail buttoned up for tonight, but we don't have that to my knowledge. And Jason or, and/or Monica, you can correct me on that if there's been some movement since this afternoon.
No, I've been back and forth with the fire inspector regarding the two heaters that were submitted to him, and we have yet to come to find a solution to that problem. My electrician, who will be doing the work to upgrade the, to a forty amp circuit to be sufficient to draw enough power for the heater, is looking for something that would work. It's difficult, we haven't been able to find anything that is, I think it's called a ULR rated for outdoor heating that would work under the tent as opposed to outside of the tent and forcing the air in.
Okay. So. So the, the steps here also are that the Board of Health is going to be reviewing this on their meeting on September tenth, which is Thursday. So. The question is, do we want to, do we have any questions, concerns? Do we want to do a provisional approval of their request pending finding of a suitable heating solution? They can still enclose the two walls regardless, even if they can't find a heating solution. So I'd like to get feedback from the board. Short discussion here. Short discussion here between Monica and the board members. Questions or comments from board members?
I have a couple of questions. In the notes that Monica, Monica provided tremendous amount of information and I appreciate that. It makes it a lot easier to try and come to a quick conclusion on this. But in your notes, you had a photo of the sidewalk area underneath the tent. And a proposal to remove the chain in this area to allow more room for people to pass when necessary, I assume that you're talking about egress.
Oh, that's kind of a side note that I wanted to be prepared to address cuz I know that there has been concern that the pedestrian walkway that runs along. The front facing side of Cal is where the sidewalk is, has seemed congested at times. And what we've done is reduced the size of that first table. Which is the image that you see there from a four top table to a two top table to try and create as much room as possible, I think we're up to about four feet. Maybe a few more inches than that. But what my propose, what where that is, where the bottleneck is happening there, because that chain is there, there's more than six feet between the next table and that table. It would be good if we could remove that chain and if, you know, two people were crossing, someone could just step. You know, one foot in between those tables while the passerby went rather than, you know, this. Congestion that's happening. It's just a suggestion, I don't know how the town feels, we do have some. Locations that don't have chain barriers on the sidewalks at all, I would. Leave the other chain barriers up just to kind of clearly mark and the chain barrier would again continue at that second table that you see in the picture where. To the front door of Cal is, that way we're not completely opening up the space, but just creating a little bit more room at that end where we're finding the problem.
That looks like it's also. A two-seat table.
Yeah.
But you wanna, you wanna contain, you wanna continue to have the chain next to that table. But drop it on the downstreet side, on the, on the side going towards the water?
Yeah, just in that area so that there is room for one person to step aside while somebody else passes so that we don't have pedestrians. You know, getting too close to each other essentially.
In the process of writing up the. The conditions for outside dining. Way, way back, two months ago.
Yeah.
June. I seem to recall that the state said that we had to have outside dining areas. Mark, demarked with chains all around them except for an entrance into the area. I went to look today for that information and I couldn't find it. So. Cuz this runs against the whole issue of. Having enough egress. If there's a problem underneath the tent that people can get out of there without having to trip over a chain. I don't know. I don't know how we handle the conflict between the state saying that we have to have chains around dining areas and. And. And the egress issue. So I thought that the reason that you were trying to drop the chain in there was because of egress.
No, as far as I understand it, the egress that we have even with the chain present. Is still substantial enough and if it isn't, the next solution would be that the panels come in 20-foot sections. So even if it's a 30-foot long tent. Actually, they come in 10-foot sections, so even if we needed to create another egress, we could always leave a section open if. You know, it was felt that there wasn't an easy way for people to get in and out in an emergency situation, but it is my understanding that without the other two walls on. And with the pedestrian pass, pathway there that, you know, we meet, we meet the needs for. Egress needed.
So the walls are gonna run along the street side. Which is, which is a boon to your customers so that they don't have to feel like a car is right there. And then along the downhill side of it. Going towards the curb but not quite reaching the curb. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I have some questions as well.
Okay.
When you're done, are you done Jeff?
I'm done, I'm not sure how to resolve this dilemma of the missing data on whether chains are required or not.
Right, I seem to recall when I were doing that Jeff, that it was the state guideline. I'd have to go back and look that up as well, but, but. One of my questions. And concerns regarding removing a portion of the chain. Is that as it is, while the tables may be six feet apart, the people when they're sitting at the table, I'm not sure how far apart they are. But if you've got people stepping into that area, then of course you've negated the, that aspect of social distance dining.
So in regards to that, the chairs are actually six feet apart, not the tables, so it's guests back to back. That's six feet apart and as, as far as. Somebody stepping in between that six feet. Of space for a moment. I mean, yes, six. It wouldn't be something that would happen often and as far as what the CDC guidelines are. For close contact and the spread of COVID, you have to be within that six feet for more than 15 minutes.
The, well, it's. In any, I don't want to go into CDC.
Yeah, we could go into the whole.
Right, I know, but, but less, that is to me less of a concern and it's a really nice idea just to be able to allow people to step out of the walkway. But one concern I would have would be if you, not you personally, but if we. Create more room, will people then be walking up to friends' tables and lingering around tables where they're not supposed to be?
Our staff and all of our locations is, I don't want to say trained to police this, but you know, it's very clearly understood that, that people need to be seated. They're not supposed to be going table to table, they're not supposed to be getting up, if they are up, they have to have a mask on. And, you know, occasionally we run into. Somebody who's unhappy with that, you know, guidance from the staff, but most people are very accommodating and understanding and just, you know.
Good, I'm glad to hear that, that's nice to know, and then, I mean, cuz personally, I think it would be really nice for you all to be able to. If we're allowed to let. Cal is in some aspects of it, but one of the other concerns was the power supply cuz you had mentioned that the fans. Had to be turned off because of an extension cord running, so where would the power for these be coming from?
So the extension cords that were put up with the fans were just not rated for outdoor use and the fans were not in good placement either. And once that was brought to my attention and the chief's attention, those, those have been taken down and removed. For the heater, it would have to be a temporary 40 amp circuit that's wired out to the tent and. Just to avoid any tripping hazards, that would run along the tent posts and to wherever the placement of the heater ended up being.
And how would it, but would it come from the building, directly from the building itself, the power source?
Yeah, we already have a power source that's there for the lights, so it would run along the same place where the lights is and it's. I probably over eight feet, if not 12 feet high, it starts at the top of the, yeah.
Okay, thank you, cuz I see it in the picture, so I just, that's.
Monica. Okay Monica, I have a couple of questions on the panels, I assume that these are panels that will roll up or roll down depending upon. Weather conditions?
Yep.
So if it's a nice day, you'll roll them up?
I would think so, yeah.
Okay, alright, and another, and I assume that the side panel that you've got certainly does not go so far as to impediment the walk-through area and only.
No, 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 it wouldn't go that far.
Extends to that, so here's a question. You've gotta have two sides out of four, now I understand most of the weather comes from down on the street, but occasionally it might come from up on the street. So are you gonna have panels on either side and have one side down or the other depending upon what the weather's doing?
I hadn't thought that much into it, I mean, it, it could be something, but you know, when we were there, we kind of talked about where most of the weather comes from and with the ocean being downhill. Just felt like most often what we're trying to do is block wind, so it'll, you know. My plan is to just have them there.
I agree, common sense is that way, but I'm just thinking you might want to do a same panel uphill and maybe that stays rolled up 90% of the time, but you never know.
Well, yeah, it's a good idea in theory, but it's also very expensive, you pay by the foot to rent these panels.
Okay, alright, so I was just curious, so you'll be flexible depending upon the weather and these will be up or down and as it goes, yep.
Any other board members have any questions or comments?
So just a comment, if I could Eli, regarding the chain in my case, so what the state asked for is that the, the area where serve, where service is being provided be clearly defined. And typically that means, you know, chaining off all four sides. In this case, you know, the three sides still have the chain and the building in essence is that fourth side in terms of defining the boundary. So you probably would be still within the spirit of the law. If you didn't require a chain along between the building and the tables. Just because it's already defining that area pretty well, obviously it's a pedestrian area between the building and that chain, but nonetheless, I think it would accomplish what the law is trying to do.
Alright, so I will make the observation that converting that. One table at the end to a two-top did, as far as I can tell, did in fact help the situation. Quite a bit. So.
May I? There's just. I don't want to make any kind of decision on this. Without the information from the Board of Health. And I think. We need to have an agreement between the fire department and, and the restaurants. That their plans for heaters are in fact going to be safe. And I understand the importance of hashing all of these issues out, but I don't think we're in a position to make any kind of decision.
Agreed.
I think we can be supportive of this idea and pending the Board of Health review.
And the fire chiefs and.
And the fire chiefs signing off, I mean, obviously the fire chief has to sign off because he's the fire inspector.
Yep, we should be the final board and not. The preliminary board. In this. Not that I'm saying we don't support the restaurants, we'd love to support the restaurants, but we need to get all of the information and agreements before we say yes, go ahead.
Well, I, can I, I just think, one thing to note is that as far as the Board of Health is concerned, adding the two walls is within the state guidelines. And I can't imagine why there would be an issue seen in prolonging the outdoor dining as long as possible considering it is the safest. Way to protect our guests and our staff members during the pandemic. So. Obviously, as far as coming to terms with the fire department, you know, we, we won't install a heater until we've found some, come to some agreement on what, you know, meets all of the codes. And that may not happen, we may not be able to find a product that does that. And that would be that, but as far as the walls are concerned.
Can I then? Suggest that we. Approve. The side curtains dependent on the approval of the Board of Health and defer questions of the heat until we have more information.
So are you making that a motion?
Yes.
I'm a little fuzzy on that, in that. I think that, that. Would you just repeat that please, Ann?
Yeah, I suggest that we vote to approve side curtains at Calas. Provided that the Board of Health. Concur.
And that the fire chief, I would.
No, 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 we're not going into anything about the heat right now, right now, we don't know about the heat.
I see what you're saying, just the curtains.
Yep.
So that would delay Calas being able to implement this for two weeks.
Yeah.
Until we meet again.
No, okay, they can implement the side curtains, they don't have to implement the heaters.
Right, right.
But the whole purpose of this is to get the heating system put into place so that they can, they can provide more comfortable dining. When it's 62 up.
Right now, the heating system that we've got, the fire chief who's, says I would not approve that, correct?
Correct.
Alright, but when you come up with a heating system that the fire chief says, yeah, this works, he gives his approval, if he gives his approval, I think we're okay with that, we have to rely on his recommendation as to what is appropriate here from a safety and effectiveness perspective, so. I think you can just put that corollary on there, you know, it's dependent upon fire chief's approval. For the.
Okay, I will accept the friendly amendment to say that we will approve the side curtains dependent on. And the heat dependent on the recommendations of the Board of Health and the fire inspector.
And I would like to further amend that to no more than two walls.
Sure.
Yeah, I think that's in the law anyway, right.
Well, exactly, but I just want to make sure we put that in.
Yep.
I would say that.
I will accept a friendly amendment.
Alright, is there any further discussion on this? Roll call vote, Mr. Bodmer Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Round?
Yes.
Mr. Bowling votes yes. Okay, so. Monica and the fire chief will go back and talk on the challenges of commercial heaters, I will be very interested to hear the results in that.
Thank you very much for the support.
And thank you for. Adapting and working with us on the walkway, we do appreciate it.
Alright, Chief Clary will be in touch.
Very good.
Take care.
You too, Monica.
Okay, on to agenda item number five, liaison project updates. There's nothing further from me on the Western Woods right now, I will be trying to send out some material about board training, which I said I would be doing in September before our next meeting. Jeff, open spaces, et cetera.
Open space, I held the first public forum on August, I think it was 26th, Wednesday, last Wednesday in August. And attendance was 30, 35 people at its peak. A presentation was done. By Courtney Lewis, the regional planner for MAPC. About what the open space and recreation planning involves. That our current plan is. Scheduled to expire in February, I believe, and. And he went through the whole. and he went through the whole process that would be done to create a new plan, outlining that process for people who were there. This information is up on the OSRP portion of the town website. There is a virtual open house that is still open for public commenting. And that will be open until this Friday, 9/11. And there's a Google survey that townspeople can take and provide their input in terms of what their priorities are for the open space plan. This process is something that Courtney's done many, many times, and and he's a good leader for it. The next event on the horizon is an advisory board committee meeting later this month and and then further survey collection. So that's where we are.
Okay. If anybody has any questions on any of these items, just jump in. I'm not going to poll everybody on them. Becky, on the planning board and the 40 R.
Nothing, no update.
Okay. And Ann Harrison, I'll kind of speak for you. We're on Zoom. And it seems to be a lot better than so far than start meeting. There are a couple of features we may go back and forth about. There's a webinar support which allows allow us for panelists to be unmuted and participants to be muted. So we're gonna, I think what we're gonna do for the time being is play with this for a bit and see if it meets our needs in its current form. So far, I like it better.
Good. I am now back in the world of being connected to the universe again. And I will figure out some way to test and explore features of of various meeting types. I think I can get. I can't certainly put together a large meeting test, but I can do feature evaluations, and I'll get in touch with, oh, my God, I've forgotten his name again, and see what we can do about making it easier to sign in and things like that.
Yeah, yeah, there are a few little oddities that we found along the way. Tiffany got this up and running last week. So we can just correspond on some of the finding points. All right. And if anybody has any comments about the technical aspects of the software, forward them on to Ann and Tiffany. Consent agenda, we have two items. One is confirming the reemployment of the town treasurer, Jen Yaskel. And then the other one is a lot line agreement on Central Pond, clarifying the lot lines in preparation for some of the work that we're doing on the Central Street culvert. Does anybody have any questions about the items in the consent agenda?
Two questions on the boundary line agreement.
Yeah, go ahead.
In the first paragraph, it says that the owner has an address of 300 Coming Center Street. I don't think that exists. Street should be eliminated from that. Unless I'm just ignorant of how that complex gets tagged. I couldn't find anything that said Coming Center Street, just Coming Center. And then a question about who's responsible for the maintenance of the wall? Is that going to still be? I know that when we do the culvert project, that that's to address that wall. Who's responsible for the for the maintenance in terms of where this boundary line falls?
So this boundary line shows that it's town ownership of the wall.
Okay.
So it's our responsibility. That's consistent with the rest of all the other boundaries on that side of the pond.
Good.
That the town owns.
Yeah, I figured as much, but I just wanted to get that clarified.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
And Greg, I had a question. It said that there were details of the plans. Did I miss the the plans? I didn't see those.
We got two copies of the agreement, no copies of the plan.
Okay, I was just curious about that because I would, you know. Thought I'd missed that.
No, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, there should have been a plot plan included.
Greg, this is a survey, is it, or just a plot plan?
It is a survey.
Okay, yep.
I have no other questions on that.
I have no questions on the consent agreement agenda. Move to accept the consent agenda?
Second.
And any discussion? All in favor, Mr. Bob McTurner?
Yes.
Mr. Round.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Jakes.
Yes.
Mr. Bowling votes yes. All right, moving on to correspondence. So we have two letters from Xfinity. They're changing things pretty much every two weeks.
Yeah.
One on program updates and Internet Essentials information, and one on programming changes. Riveting material. I have a letter to the Board of Selectmen from the Open Space and Rec Committee regarding the powderhouse access. And we may want to see if a board member wants to volunteer to work with Greg to potentially resolve or at least gather sufficient information to resolve that or try to resolve that issue. See whether or not it needs to be brought back before the Board of Selectmen for moderation.
I'll help out Greg with that.
Thank you, John. That would be great. And then we have a letter from a resident for our information on the draft by the Citizens Work Group on ADUs. We've gotten some feedback back from the town planner on that, but there is still some additional information that we really need to hear from the planning board before we before I think we need to really weigh in. So it's mostly for our information. They did ask this come to the board. And we will may need to respond to it, but we need to get a little bit more information first. Town administrator's report.
Yeah, fairly fairly brief and fairly self explanatory. We are finally seeing some green on the green, so that is getting very close to being done. Really, the last elements finishing up far end behind the church, where we're putting in two new handicap parking spaces and getting the railings on the steps and on the ramp. And that things are pretty, pretty, pretty good shape. And obviously, the the honor roll memorial, we hope will start in in not too distant future here this fall to then get that finally, that whole area wrapped up before the snow flies. So that'll be good. Long overdue.
At this point, Greg, what's holding that up?
Holding up the.
The honor roll.
Yeah, the receipt of the granite and all the all the writing on the granite. So they ran into a major delay because they closed down the granite quarries with covid. And so there's a very large backlog and waiting period for for the granite.
Okay, thank you.
Making good progress on the waterline replacement on Boardman. And as soon as that wraps up for the town end, the homeowners association will follow up with repaving Boardman Avenue. Because that is a private road, so we're obviously responsible for the water, but not the road itself. So that's moving forward. HBAC system in Town Hall is also progressing well. And the project should be wrapping up by the end of the month, in September. So in time for the new heating season, which will be good. Other minor updates that I provided in the memo to you hiring, we do have a job offer for our new assistant accountant. Waiting to get confirmation on that. And we do have the advertisement out for the town clerk position and have received a number of resumes, and that continues deadline is I forgot to confirm that with the actual day, a couple of weeks away. So those are the highlights from my report. Obviously, after being away, trying to get unburied from all the emails and other issues that came up while I was away. Appreciate people pitching in and helping out while I was away. So we'll have more for you next time, but that's enough for now.
Okay. So the only other observation I'd make here for this part of the meeting is there will be, I believe, 9/11 ceremony at the fire station on Friday. Members typically have gone by there. I will stop by. Everybody's going to be, of course, socially distancing. And if you haven't received it, I'll make sure you get an email about it. Okay.
Do you know what time that is?
I don't know what time they have it scheduled for this year. I think we're usually there at 8:30.
8:30?
Yeah, a little later, I believe.
9:45.
Yeah, okay.
And the ceremonial start right after the bells ring at 10 o'clock.
Okay, I will do my best to get there.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
So the there's nothing left in our open part of this meeting. We are going to be going into an executive session with the finance committee. So if nobody else has any other further comments, I am going to move that we go to executive session, not to return to open session. Under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 6, to consider a purchase exchange lease of value of real estate if the chair so declares, an opening meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. May I get a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Mr. Bob McTurner.
Yes.
Ms. Jakes.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Round.
Yes.
Mr. Bowling votes yes. Now, we are going to use the Zoom breakout rooms for this, and I'm going to move the appropriate board members over into that breakout room. Other members of the public who remain behind will be freely able to talk to each other, and we will not be returning to open session. And I will ask that if any of the finance committee members are on the phone as opposed to sign in through the Zoom application, could you please speak up and let me know?
Yep, hey, Eli, this is Mike. I'm on phone, not Zoom.
Okay, what's the last four digits?
7698.
Gotcha. Okay, I'll make sure I got you.
Eli, if you'll move me, Gail.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Let's see, folks. Here we go manually. Oh, here we go. Good. 7698, Ann Harrison, Andy Oldman, Becky, King Hottess, Greg, Jeff, Markwell, Molly Creighton. All right. Okay. Breakout rooms are in progress. And I believe that we will be ceasing recording now.